I got my big family here. My first year, I only got my first year.
Everybody.
Yeah.
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 Are you?
Yeah.
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 Because they always rattle your phone?
Sure.
They're like, I do pencil so much. It's like, I don't know.
What I discovered is that it was already.
I know.
It's like, I'm actually very, 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 I do pencil so much.
You're here.
Yeah.
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 Sometimes it's cool.
Yeah.
And then you keep a friend of pencil out there. And the pencil box is still cool. I have to charge them like three times a day online. But I do some, like, I do some.
Yeah.
Um, because I haven't.
Cry in there.
Yeah.
Um, because I haven't.
Yeah.
That's why I don't get some wood.
But you're like.
You don't have like, like bags, like bags.
Yeah, like you know. I have a front pocket. Um, in my, like, my, like, dropstream bag.
Yeah.
But I have no person to dropstream back when I circulate from the pocket. So like, what happens to those, the baggage? It all turns up and stuff on my hands, my hands. I can't see my hands. I can't see my hands. I can't see anything out of my bag. Like, literally every morning, I have to, like, keep this kind of, keep the pencil out.
So can you just let your house, like, five?
Small business.
No, I put it in the pocket at the end of the day in the morning, you know? I put it like, I just don't carry it around.
It'll be okay.
Oh, but yeah, I have 548 in my backpack, which.
Okay.
I think.
I think.
Yeah.
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 Like, I have the, I have the, I use the doctor's, I want to have one.
Okay.
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 That's great.
Yeah.
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 Sure.
She was like, yeah.
Yeah.
She was like, yeah.
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 Oh, you know.
That was all the coordinator.
Yeah.
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 Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He's been made.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
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 Sure.
Six is sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Respect to George.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Jude is in class today.
Correct.
Fifteen.
Tuesdays.
So.
George.
Yeah.
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 Quiet, also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll rise around you.
Right now.
So we can start your meeting. Everybody else can start or call. Suits. All right. The March tenth Finance Committee meeting, probably Scottish photograph, is called Order. Um, Chris, front row, you wanna? Who pluses?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can't read these things.
Remember, check maybe.
Yeah.
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 But yeah.
Check me for the letter.
Would you like to call the roll for the record?
Director Lindoza. Here. Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Russo.
Here.
Director Simic.
Here.
Director Zaleski.
Here.
Director Apple. Director Frank.
He's not able to be here tonight?
Director Honschar.
We are not sure. He might be coming.
And Director Schreiber.
Here. Uh, to protect. Sure. I will turn things over to Mr. Jeswick to update us on some budget finance items.
So with, um, I wanted to change the format a little bit of our budget update where I give kind of comparison from this year to last year's to go by object, which is salaries, employee benefits, and then by programs. Um, some of the breakout is regular ed, special ed, our business office, um, support offices, so bed service, and just give an overall look of where we're at this year compared to last year. So, um, expenses this year, nineteen twenty, through this time, February twenty ninth, we were sixteen point one eight million. Last year, we were at sixteen point zero one million, which is about one percent higher than last year. Right now, we have budgeted twenty nine point five eight six million versus last year's budget of twenty eight point four one four million, uh, for a total difference of one point one seven million. So the budget was four point one two percent higher, or one percent of our expenditures so far this year. So I think we're on a pretty good pace as far as expenditures go. Um, I also did a rapid breakout by percentage, so you can see how the money has come in. Some of the, some of the state money can be a little bit slow from year to year times, but looks like it's remained pretty consistent for the most part this year, um, because we have twenty two point three two five million in last year. At this time, we had twenty one point three eight five million in for about nine hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars more. That's four point three percent higher from last year to this point. We budgeted twenty eight point eight million dollars, twenty eight point eight seven million dollars. Um, and then last year, we budgeted twenty eight point one three for the revenue. We have enough to put a two point six two percent higher for the nineteen twenty year. So, um, that's where our current budget update, um, with the budget is we have retirements in and such, we're around an eight sixty deficit right now. Um, so that's a quick update on the twenty twenty one budget and then also some of the aspects we're, we're getting to our final recommendation on the bus contract is, everybody knows, STA came to us in January and said they were not going to renew their two-year option, put us in a spot where we had to go out and get bids, um, not bids, but we had to get proposals at that point from folks. We had a choice to go out to RFP with specific contract rates. We felt the process was better to just reach out to several bus companies and get proposals. One bus company said it, they felt it was advantageous that we went just for the proposal route without submitting an RFP because they felt we had better, better proposal numbers on per day bus routes rather than doing the proposal versus what they've seen with RFP. So that's a positive. I think we're at that point and then, um, just to get on with it. We have an agreement. Mr. Derek Wilson's here with the Wilson Group and Benny, who's our direct liaison, I would say, with the Wilson Group, and he's worked back and forth with us since I've been here. And Mr. Rodella was here and the Josh Jones. And we really have worked on cleaning up some of the overages we were having, making it more efficient with the black and white versus color copiers. And when Josh came in, we've been kind of talking back and forth with Benny at this point and, um, wanted to make things more efficient, wanted to try to save some paper and such, also get better machines that run more efficiently in. So we came up with a process where we were able to keep our payment the same, but extend, we're in a current five-year lease that ends in December, I believe, December of two thousand and twenty one. Um, but with putting these new machines in, one of the machines, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Wilson explain that production machine that's gonna allow our kids up in the shop to print, uh, things for cardboard where they can do megaphones, golf boxes for the foundation events and, you know, instead of paying an outside company, we can reimburse the expenses to the district and it gives the kids something to do with those. So we've added to the shop up there, we have better machines through the district. And then, uh, one of the things Mr. Wilson really stresses with that is community outreach. His, his daughter played for the basketball team, was a thousand-point scorer for, he has grandkids in the district, and he wanted to do something nice for the district as far as with our athletic programs in the gym. And, um, I'll let him paint the floor with that to kind of answer any questions on that. But we're looking into doing a new five-year lease with the Wilson Group with this new equipment to give us like, just a better overall setup, which Josh really worked with Benny back and forth, probably their Benny a little bit crazy, but I think we got the right machines in here now. And, um, like I said, no increase in costs. Derek wanted to do something nice for the community, so I'll let him paint the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as, um, Chris said, my name's Derek Wilson. I'm the owner of the Wilson Group. Uh, the Wilson Group is a workflow solutions provider. Anything that deals in the creation, production, distribution, sharing of information and documents, um, ranging from copiers all the way up to document storage, destruction and retrieval. Um, with that being said, I wanted to start out by saying thank you to the district for continuing to trust and believe in the Wilson Group. Uh, we've been able to partner with you for the last seven years. Um, as Chris has conveyed, it's a process, and we're in the process now of streamlining your workflow. And what I mean by that is you have a significant amount of antiquated printers, colored printers, that there's a high cost association with that versus segueing that over to the MFPs where your cost association is, I'd say, half of what you're used to. So we've eliminated a significant amount of printers with the goal of printing to the MFPs with a significant lower cost, but more firepower, so to speak, by adding three devices to the district. Um, so it's a win-win for everyone and you keep your, your investment the same. Um, and then on the flip side, I think the biggest thing that we're able to do with and for the district is that, as Chris had mentioned, you know, um, all my children went to the Carlington School District. I had three daughters that graduated from here, and my youngest one was a pretty good athlete. Um, and then I have my granddaughters now, my grandkids are in the district. And obviously, I want to see everyone do well. So with that being said, um, one is the first thing I'd like to do is offer the district a two percent discount across the board, um, if you pay upfront versus over a, a monthly cycle, um, which you'll see a savings, which you could put toward, back toward the community and the school district and the kids. Uh, the second thing is that we're gonna give you the monies to swap out the scoreboards because they need to be changed. Um, so we're willing to do that as well. Um, and we just really want to see and continue to sponsor, obviously, the Golf Valley. We've always been a platinum sponsor for that. So we're, we're a firm believer, you get what you give in life, and we'd like to give the children in the district of Carlington an opportunity to be the best that they can be. And that's the purpose of the Wilson Group and the workflow solution that we're providing to you today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, thank you for all you're doing for us, but thank you for being a two-generation Carlington guy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
I got, I got thirteen grandkids, so he'll be around for a while.
Can I, um, Joe, can I just ask you a question? You said MFP and I'm wondering what that is and how that is more efficient than, than, I guess, the old machines?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I throw a lot of acronyms out of the time. So you have, so what I mean by MFP is multi-function product or device. So they do copy, print, scan, fax.
They're copier.
So they're, they're copiers, really, in layman's terms, versus you have a significant amount of antiquated printers, which are single-function devices. So your users will print to the printers, then take the document off the printer and walk to the copier and scan or print to whatever they want to do.
Right.
So it's defeating the purpose of streamlining the convergence of the technology. So why not just print straight to the device, um, and save half?
Right.
Right.
Say you need, just to like, to a printer, one copy, say you send it to the MFP and you say, well, I need two hundred fifty copies.
Exactly.
Right.
Yes. And you get better image quality and much more functionality versus just a single-function printer.
So it's, it's more efficient with the ink and all that sort of.
It's more efficient from a, from a workflow productivity standpoint as it pertains to time, as well as it's more efficient as it pertains to dollars and cents.
Right.
Because your cost per page, if I'm not mistaken, off the top of my head, Benny's better than me with the numbers. I believe you're probably half. Um, you're around, what, oh, oh, five for black and white?
It costs about half.
Yeah.
Um, of what it, per page, the cost to run through a copier or an MFP, it's about half as much as it is to print, to, to, to the printer. So by driving all that volume to the copier, it, it helps the whole financial transaction work out so we can put more copiers into the district to make them more efficient. Wanted to jump in on that, um, uh, with the efficiencies. One of the things at the district is there are over fifteen different models of printers over the years that have been accumulated, and with that comes over fifty-seven supply items.
Right.
So, uh, Angie's known as the person that handles that, and it's, it becomes challenging for both us and her. And with this solution, the printers will, will have a grand total of five supply items. So there's a lot of streamlining and they, they have a higher yield. So her job, her, her time can be much better spent doing the things that she's good at rather than worrying about printer to her. Um, that, that was a big part of what started driving this and, um, and, and it'll, if we think of the entire thing, we'll give the, the district just the efficiencies of the, the staff and everybody will be greatly enhanced.
Thank you. And with, you were talking about putting the machines in early and then maybe some of the cool things with the production printer?
Oh, sure, I can follow. So part of the, uh, one of the additions to the district is a production-level printer into the shop area up in the high school, uh, and that'll provide the ability to do, uh, much thicker papers, very, like, pro-quality stuff that, that has maybe been printed at Kinko's or things like that. And at Kinko's, one sheet of paper would cost fifty cents to the district and in, here it'll cost a nickel. So there's, by bringing that in-house, there's, there's some soft cost or some, not even realized cost savings at this point, but it also allows for that to be utilized in an educational standpoint where you can teach some of those, uh, real things for the, um, what is supposed to happen in the shop and learn those tech ed-type, uh, functions. So we're, uh, that'll be included in there, can make booklets, uh, banners, things like that. So, uh, working with Josh, that was, uh, Josh Jones really, uh, was, was behind that aspect of it and, uh, we were able to work that into the.
When do we expect that to be installed?
Um, so we're working through that, the two large copiers, we're gonna work out a way to get those in immediately because those have actually, like, already served. We can work with the district as soon as possible on the, the production printer as well. With this transaction of billing, the new cycle will begin with the fiscal year in January. So, I'm sorry, July.
If you say yes tonight, we can do it next year.
Mr. Wilson, do it every week.
But some other things we were able to build in as well is the, uh, with the copiers that are there, so instead of sending to a printer, printers generally, you can't do front-to-back printing also, so the copy machines you can send straight through the front-to-back, it saves on paper, it also collates and does the stapling as well. Um, and in addition to that, we were, entered in some, uh, security measures as well so that if we're printing secure documents, IEPs, GIPs, things of that nature, um, now you'll log into the machine, you'll, you'll be basically printing to a cloud and from that cloud you could go to any printer then or any copier in the district and print your, your job from that, from that machine.
Follow the print.
Yeah.
So if I can follow that, uh, printer is, uh, there's a software piece that, actually, Joe Rodella purchased for the district. We've been, we've been, we will roll it out to its entirety with this, um, solution. It's called Paper Cut, and it's a piece of software that runs on the server and all of the, uh, users that use their pre-existing, right now they type their login, but we're gonna use their pre-existing HID badges. So from a, it, it hits on the secure, uh, aspect. So if you hit file, print, it actually is printing into a server in the cloud where you can pull it down from, from every device that's connected to it in the district, which is convenient. There are service issues that happen in, in, in our industry, so people are not hindered. So back to their efficiencies, if one machine that they had originally sent to, they can just go to the next one, release it. Uh, that also allows for the reduction of use because of waste jobs. Uh, a district a little larger than, than, than Carlington that we, we, we work with, who were at the end of a year cycle, uh, was able to save fifty-two thousand pieces of paper from coming out of the devices, cost somewhere probably around fifteen hundred dollars, uh, by putting that, that software and using it in this fashion. So there is, uh, there is a, you know, unknown, but I, I, we're gonna realize some, some costs or some efficiency in that sense. Uh, so, and there's also an audit trail. So if there ever is a need for something, you know what everybody is doing and who did it and when. So.
Yeah, we have counts on what everybody prints now from that.
And it allows a lot of control as well so we can make sure, and we, we've committed to Josh and to Chris that we would sit down, uh, quarterly to review the usage, and we have the ability to put in controls to what the staff is able to use, whether that's from color or overall usage, to make sure that, that budgeted amount is truly what the district is, is going to seek. And we can work that over time.
And we've been working on that process for about two years now.
Indeed.
We continue to clean up what our printing was as we saw our use. So, Dave Wilson's, Wilson Group has always been willing to come in and say, okay, this is what you're using, let's fix, fix your rates, let's move your, move your averages from this level to this level, you're moving black and white, as we've just kind of trying to become more efficient and less costly.
Awesome.
I have a question. Um, I appreciate, like, the connection, community and everything. You said scoreboards.
Mm-hmm.
That's like really amazing, like, which scoreboards? I don't, I don't know which.
Basketball. The ones in the gym.
Okay.
First two.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Sure.
Very much.
That's a good deal. Thank you.
Football one needs to be done too.
I'm so.
I can't even.
He's, he's.
If we vote tonight, come get one from the football stadium.
Woo!
Huh? We're blow up. I'm making a motion, huh? You give us a scoreboard for the football field, I'll make the motion.
You know, man.
Be, be careful what you wish for.
You too.
Huh?
Hey.
I'm a hole. For now, okay?
All right.
You know, change your gradual process, you can't handle it right, right? Huh? Five years from now, it might be another opportunity to be the best, huh?
I had to ask.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Close, close mouth gets nothing.
That's.
I agree.
I hesitate to ask this question, but are there any other?
We're sorry. We took.
All good. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
And I do.
Everybody have a good evening.
And thank you guys for coming in for everything.
For sure.
We're happy to continue the partnership, so. And that's, that's about what I have for finance this evening.
Any other board member have finance questions or comments? If not, um, we'll adjourn. Uh, can I move to adjourn? I'll take a motion to adjourn?
So.
Oh, you don't, actually, I do have one. I just want to bring, thank you for my. Um, we had a presentation last week talking about the fund balance.
Yep.
And usage of the fund balance. It, I had a conversation with Jude earlier, would like to see us on track to, to take some of that information and to do some things with it rather than just let the whole thing sort of sit there and not go anywhere. So from, from the standpoint of having had a discussion of strategically planning how we're gonna use our fund balance, what is the desire of the board in terms of assessing that, implementing it, et cetera? Can we talk about it at the next meeting, maybe take some action? One thing Jude and I talked about was, for example, you know, we have certain capital projects that are gonna have to be done in the next five years. Our suggestion would be to set up a capital projects fund and just transfer that money there, uh, into that account as a, as a first step, because we know we're gonna have to spend that much. We know that from debt.
Yeah, and I think we, we were talking about that meetings ago, too, with some of the surplus maybe have, and through half will part, just something to be in that process.
So, Dave, you, you were gonna send a copy that.
I know, and I apologize. I started it earlier today as to get a, I'll do that, I promise I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah. My apologies. From my impression, I think the next steps were for you and Jude to get with John and Chris and sort of have a deeper conversation about the tool and about the assumptions and make sure the four of you are on the same page. And if Chris and John bring it to us and say, hey, we like this tool, we think it's valuable, we think we should use it, then I personally would say, okay, that's, you know, that's. Are we, and I know there were some directors weren't meeting last week, but are we on the same page for that we need to be strategic in how we use our fund balance? That we, where we may be needing to work to establish the amounts we're gonna be using each year? And that's where the tool comes in. Are we all on the same page that we need to do this consciously and purposely and strategically? Don't follow it. Is that, is that one thing we can take in this meeting? I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Any disagree, any disagreement for that?
David, I'll be looking forward to that, uh, email. Should we send?
You'll, you'll get it. You'll get it. If I go, send it to you first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, all right, I'll, I'll mention to Chris then, we'll try to get together with John and, um, rather to Jude, get together with John and Chris. Uh, but then look forward also to establishing that capital funds account and maybe we need to talk with him in a minute at the next meeting. Okay. Great.[1475.44] Okay, great, nice. Thank you. Any other financial issues, questions?
The federal services budget that you have before you is, will be on your agenda, which will be sent out tomorrow morning. It was just on her copy that the AIU sent, so I was giving you on her copy. There's also a digital copy on, in Board Docs as well. So, and I'll send you an email tomorrow to let you know when it's live. Thank you.
We have a public question on finance?
Yes.
Go ahead, identify yourself for the.
I'm Jamie Harvey, I have a child at Crafton Elementary. I hate to be the one to ask this, because I'm not panicked, but what is the district's plan proactively if we do close? Because where I work, we've been getting emails of, this is what's going to happen, you need to be prepared.
We've been in the process collaborating with the AIU and PDE in the process of developing our pandemic plan. We attended a webinar last week in relationship to those plans. This week, put more formalized steps to our plan, and then also attending a final webinar with the AIU on Friday as well, to finalize our plans as well in the event that pandemic spreads much further than it currently has.
Will there, if the schools do close, will the students have assignments? Will they have flexible instructional days? How does that work?
The problem with, the state has not come out with a statement saying that they would accept flexible instructional days. Carlington has not applied for FIDS at this time, so we would not have the opportunity to use flexible instructional days to cover some of those days. Now, if we do go into closures, then you're probably looking weeks as opposed to just four days of what the, the state allows for FIDS. We also run into the challenge of being able to provide instruction for some of our special education students. Those services cannot be provided in the absence of direct contact, so we would definitely have issues there. The last issue, the last word, I think, from Governor Wolf, or, I'm sorry, from Mr. Rivera at the, at PDE level, indicated that the days missed would most likely be attributed then at the end of the school year. So the days that we would take off, most likely have to make those up at the end of the school year.
Thank you.
But we have, prior to this, Mr. McDade, even before the pandemic issue with the coronavirus came out, purchased some equipment, the electrostatic.
Sprayers.
Electrostatic sprayers. There are cordless devices that can go through, very quickly go through classrooms, so part of our plan is to take a look at if we know of any students who have contracted any type of flu, not just the coronavirus, but just flu in general, that we would be able to go through and target specific rooms, go through extra cleaning of those areas, and then also take a look at any students who have low immune systems in our district as well, track their schedules to make sure that we're cleaning those rooms and going through the newer technology that we have as well. So we're trying to put together a comprehensive plan that not only will help us just with this singular issue, but then issues down, the flu is something, it comes around every year, and I think some of the plans we're putting in place will help better address some of those issues in the future as well. So it's a good question, I'd like to bring it up.
Another question, not relevant to that. Sorry, Mr. Wilson, this is not going to help your paper supply. Sorry. One of the things that this district does is send home flyers, like, you can't believe, I get out my kid's folder every night and stand at the garbage and throw away paper after paper after paper. Is there a way we can limit all that copying and do?
He doesn't buy the paper for us.
Do the email blasts?
Yes.
Doing things of that nature to cut back on copying, and also it's colored paper, which is more expensive than white paper. And that's, I know we've talked about, I can't remember if it was at a PTA meeting or another board meeting, but it's something we've talked about, and I haven't seen any process.
Other flyers, district flyers, school flyers.
Oh, there are all kinds of flyers.
What's I'm saying, I know, like, half the teachers have websites that I don't see why they can't.
They're usually not that, like, classroom teacher flyers, every, like, the holiday parties, there's like a reminder. Most of the flyers, though, are PTA kind of functions, any, like, anything that the principal would send out, she sends out like a calendar, things.
Isn't that on the website?
Some of it might be, but there's also.
I mean, we have the capabilities, and it's all the conversation.
But I don't know, like, if every Thursday, you get an email blast with every parent communication for that week.
That's one thing that we're working on, and that, what we're going to try to start with is in every other week, discuss this with Mr. Serman, probably two or three weeks into, into getting here, is starting on an every other week rotation, is sending out a blast that has information, a lot of that stuff would be the types of things you would get in a flyer. And then, when I was at Carnegie last week for the PTA meeting, some of the same types of issues came up, and one of the things I asked back to the community too is, is email sufficient? Is that a good means of communication? And I think in other cases, too, there were some issues of just being able to find things on our website and be able to locate them, so we're looking at some type of a landing page on our website that would be much easier to navigate and be able to get you to the resources that you need. And in the same way, is it with an e-blast, we can put links, embed, hyperlinks embedded into that, so it would take you directly to parts of our web that directly address some of those issues. So I think that's something we can definitely, we have, we definitely have the technology to do it, it's just a matter of organizing our efforts to put it out there.
Dr. Kreider, is it a concern at all that there might still be people who don't have access to technology?
Yes.
Yeah, I feel like we've had this conversation, and we tried to do this several years ago, and we have to balance the fact that not everybody's as connected as some of us may be, so everything we take away and we send out electronically only, there are going to be parents who don't get it, and then they come to the meetings and let us know, we're not getting anything, our kids don't have anything. So I don't think it's a bad, I think it's a balance, I don't think that we can make all of this go away.
Can we give parents an opportunity to opt out of paper? Like, every.
It is a management issue. It doesn't affect the classroom. But I think there's definitely ways we can, and I agree, there's definitely a balance. I can't recall the exact percent of emails that we have from parents, probably about half, so if we made efforts to increase that, to find out what is our true digital landing spot as far as individuals with access, I think the more we narrow that down, that would help too.
Even if we had paper, we could consolidate, instead of having four separate pages on five days, we could have one page, front and back, that has all those items on it. So there's ways to address what you're, what you're, what you're asking.
Devices have booklet makers, so you can make nice little booklets and send them home.
Perfect. But these new machines have capabilities like scanning, so to make PDFs and.
Scan the file, scan the folder, scan the email, absolutely.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to the finance committee. Move second.
Aye.
What was the fair side? Co-sign?